I'd just like to say welcome everybody and board members if you've had a chance to look at the August 8th, Board Meeting Agenda, just take a look at that. If you have any questions, talk to me after the meeting or during the meeting or whenever you'd like. And turn it over to Dr. Bill or Dr. Putnam, I'll be-
Mr. Francis, let's let Dr. Putnam go. He's first on the agenda-
Correct.
-with a couple items.
That's great.
Up here real briefly where you can see me, I'm sitting back here with our guest, Zach Koontz. He works with Emergency Management. He's here to share an executive brief on the Smoky Mountain Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's a 700-page document. I understand Ms. King shared that with you earlier in the week. Sure that's been some heavy reading for you, and so he's going to hopefully frame it to us in a way we understand. Mr. Koontz?
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Good evening, Board Members. Hope y'all everyone is doing well this evening. So, the 2022 update of the Smoky Mountain Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, I've created an executive summary there before you, but this plan here is a plan that we've had in place in the past. It's on a five-year planning cycle, and every five years we're required to update that plan. The most recent plan was from 2017, and there's been a few modifications and changes of this plan. So, the Smoky Mountain Region is part of Western North Carolina and includes the counties of Cherokee, Graham, Haywood, Jackson, and Swain, along with municipal county government organizations, along with and also the ECBI, Eastern Bank of Cherokee. The purpose of this plan is prepared for summarizing all of our hazards inside of our region, and then how we address those hazards through mitigation efforts in a planning cycle. So, this plan was developed with input from all those counties and the municipal organizations, and it's been prepared with coordination of FEMA Region 4, which is the FEMA region that we're in, along with North Carolina Emergency Management, to make sure the plan meets all applicable FEMA and state requirements for hazard mitigation plans. Communities who are signatories and adopt the federally approved hazard mitigation plan are then become eligible for prepositioned and more apt to receive hazard mitigation funds before and after the next disasters. So, our hazard mitigation funds that we see, like after the previous storm we had come through for Tropical Storm Fred, are like acquisition buyout type of mitigation fundings, and then also projects such as any type of mitigation projects that would be like a rain gauge, a river gauge system, emergency notification systems, and things of that nature. It's grant funding that we're allowed to apply for as a county and organizations to receive any type of mitigation. This plan update highlighted there before you in that table, it kind of shows that we have three different categories is what they lump them into, natural hazards, other hazards, and technological hazards. And some of those natural hazards that we hit on are drought, hurricanes, or coastal hazards and events such as a tropical storm or tropical depression, tornadoes and thunderstorms, severe thunderstorms, severe winter weather, dam failures, flooding, earthquakes, which we are susceptible to here in Western North Carolina and have the possibility of, along with geological events such as landslides and things of that nature. Also, the other hazards that we've identified in this plan update are wildfires and infectious diseases. We can see those impact our daily lives. We see more and more here in our current environment. And then we also have a technological hazard category, which is hazardous subjects, terrorism, cyber attacks, and then any type of electronic magnetic poles that would knock out of our, any type of electronical devices. And those types of hazards there are then broke down into categories on what are a high-risk, moderate risk, or low-risk. And our high-risk categories for our area are severe winter weather, flooding, tornadoes, severe thunderstorms, hurricanes, and coastal events such as a tropical storm. And moderate risks that we run into are drought, wildfire, cyber, infectious disease, earthquakes, dam failures, hazardous subjects, and geological events. And then we're putting the low category risk for a laterological emergency. We're not near a radiological or nuclear power plant, that's the reason for that, but we are inside of like a fallout zone in the 50-mile area for it if an incident was to occur. And then terrorism or an electronic magnetic poles. This is done through a hazard vulnerability assessment where everything is weighted based scored on events that occurred in the past. So, what we like to do in Emergency Management is visit what happened in the past, give it a rating, and then build our capabilities to that. So, we don't need to prepare for the possibility of a electronic magnetic pulse if we've not had one to happen here in our area, but we still put it in there as a category on something that should be on our radar that we have a plan for. We don't invest the resources to respond to it as much as we would to respond to a flood because it's a high-risk category. So, some of the mitigation goals that we have in this new plan are to increase public awareness and hazard mitigation risk, and that's one reason I'm here before you tonight, to share this information with you, but also to help share with our citizens and the, and the, and the public. We want to enhance new policies to help to reduce the damming effects of all hazards, including natural, man-made, and technological hazards, increase the capability to support and implement effective mitigation measures, identify and mitigate development infrastructure in unknown hazard areas, and consider the risks and the impacts for potential mitigation measures to incorporate it if proposing a building new structure in a known hazard, and that's talking about floodplains and codes, building codes and things of that nature, encouraging the conservation of natural environments through forest, surface waters, wetland, floodplains, and stream controls. And then we want to improve emergency services' capabilities to identify and seek funding for necessary equipment, as well as fostering regional cooperation, cooperation ship and response and recovery. Some of those mitigation techniques that we'll be using over the next five years with this plan to help achieve these goals are prevention, property protection, natural resources protection, structural projects, emergency services increases, and then also publication, educational awareness. One of the emergency services things that we have going on right now for mitigation plans is a, is a beefing up our warning and notification capabilities from observing flood waters as far as the amount of rain we receive in a certain time period, and then where our river heights are at, so that we're able to rapidly notify the citizen of the incident that's occurring. Also, a sirens system is one of the things also that we've received mitigation funding for. We're working on a triple redundant sirens system to be installed to be able to be activated and triggered if we have a flood emergency occurring. I did provide a QR code there on the page. If you didn't have a access and that link didn't work for you, you can scan that phone there on your phones. You can look at the plan and do a little bit of light reading. It is about 728 pages, I think. So, but it also covers all the, all the counties in the West. So, it breaks it down into demographics, and then why we're susceptible to those, and how we're going to kind of mitigate those hazards. So, I came before you tonight just to share this information with you and like to invite you to be a signatory on the plan and adopt a resolution maybe at your next board meeting doing so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Board Member?
Comments?
Go ahead.
Well, one question, as I brought up to the County Commissioners. So, when we flooded at the end of Chestnut Mountain Road down on 1923-
Sir.
Well, part of the problem was is the culvert had three openings in it, and one of them was already like dammed up from debris from before, and it piled up, and then the second one's growed up. So, when it started coming up, it basically already had a dam, and then when it backed into the road, into the, you know, where there's a garage there, it floated those cars over and then it plugged them up. Is there any plan, and that's what I asked, you know, Mr. Rogers on the Commissioners, is go and clean out those culverts so they're opened up when, when this comes, you know, beforehand?
So, normal day-to-day maintenance on those culverts fall back to NC DOT, but there is funding that the county has just received recently to work on what's called EWP, Emergency Watershed Protection, go through and clean up certain specific sites throughout the county, and remove debris that was deposited by the flood, along with a little bit of hopefully bank stabilization.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
And specifically to that, that water stream on the Chestnut Mountain side, we don't have, we did not have in the past any type of monitoring of that height, and the new grant funding that we just received will install two gauges on that creek there to monitor the height of that creek, along with a new rain gauge at the top of the ridge there on 12 o'clock mountain to capture how much data and how much rain we're getting per hour, per minute. It'd regulate it all the way down to the minute.
Good. Our neighbors would be glad to hear that. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Francis?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was looking at, so this was originally began in, what, 2012? So, this is actually the second renewal?
This is the second renewal, yes, sir.
And since that began in that 2012, what is some of the new measures that have already been incorporated before the renewal period that you could touch on?
Prior to 2012, on the emergency services side, some of the things that we didn't have in place was a warning and notification system to reach out to the public, and that's one of the things that we've implemented in with a, the Haywood Alert System, that where citizens can register, receive notifications. So, that was one of the projects that we worked on to have the capability of warning the public of the hazard that they're coming into. And then also, our public information and education side has picked up since 2012, and we're going to increase it even more with this new plan with some different strategies that we didn't have in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Francis, if it's okay, I just wanted to give a specific example about the value of the plans that they have and how it helps us in rapid, rapidly changing weather situations. Last May, you'll remember, we dismissed early, and we knew that water was coming, but we weren't expecting really any flooding until later in the day, and we had checked, our transportation people had checked our normal locations to check and looked at some of the gauges that we can see online, and had done that right around lunch, shortly after lunch. Zach called me, I don't know what time it was, two-ish, and said, "You gotta go." And I, and we, and we did. We needed to go. It was touch and go to get some of the buses, bus routes run, and there were some roads that we could not run, but we would not have known that without their monitoring capability and their rapid notification. So, that's a real live example from, from the end of the last school year.
Very good. Thank you very much for your time in presenting that to us so we can better understand the process. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Sure.
I'll add one thing before I sit back down and get to my mic. Zach has worked tirelessly to help the school system, has, has all of Emergency Management, so I just wanted to say publicly, thank you to him organizing shelters, setting up food banks, all kinds of things. You would not imagine the kind of support and help he provides to not only us, but the entire county. So, we're very grateful for our relationship with him.
Thank you. Back to Mr. Dr. Putnam.
All right. I've changed mics and took my position. I wanted to sit with our visitor. Your next item is TMS Computerized Bus Routing Maps Contract. If you'll remember, in March, you've already approved one contract for this, around $6,000 or $7,000. And it was to address converting the new 911 addresses in the Canton area over to a new addressing system in our TMS program, which is what our Transportation Department uses to map and draw out routes for all of our buses. Routes directly affect our efficiency. If we run them, we get reimbursed for running those routes and delivering kids to their correct locations. It's also a critical part of ensuring that we are safely dropping off at the correct location and making sure we have accurate records to do so. Well, in that initial intake, the, the very first contract they filed, they, they found over 200 roads that were not on a map anywhere in our records. So, they will literally have, what I'm proposing, or what's for your consideration, is to contract with the same group to do a far more extensive mapping. Roads, for the most part, within the Canton boundaries were predominantly there, but additional roads have been added over the last decade, and we are talking about a decade of roads that have not been recorded or reported to NC DPI, and that needs to be corrected. And so, we would, I would propose them for your consideration that we contract with the same group to complete the work that they began. They completed the work we asked them to, but neither them nor us could have anticipated the roads had not been reported or added to maps that were sent to NC DPI. So, that would, that would be for your consideration. I do believe it'll be an item for approval. I just wanted to have the discussion about it, obviously not for approval tonight. That'll be Monday night, but, so I'll entertain any questions you might have.
What's it cost?
$15,000. Let me look, look. I'll get you an exact number. $15,000. Too much stuff. And glasses? $15,249.
Now, is this for the entire county, or is it just certain sections of the county?
For the entire county. What they plan to do is use a Haywood County GIS and overlay it with our existing TMS map and bring up to speed and up to date all existing roads in our TMS map from Haywood County GIS.
That's a good idea.
I had, I think that's a good idea, but only problem I have is, so my driveway in 2011, my, just to my house, so I sold an acre land to my in-laws, and they built 113 yards above me. So, my driveway changed to a road, two houses, no kids now. I'm wondering if a lot of these roads that haven't been noted are just where people have been. Anytime you build more than one house on a road now, or a driveway, it's, has to become a road. So, I mean, I think it's fine, but I think what we're going to find out is there's just going to be a lot of where we're not going to be going up to my in-law's house and turn around, you know?
Right.
A lot of roads like that. So, I just kind of want to point that out.
Yeah, there are still restrictions regardless of classification, bridges that support the tonnage that a bus weighs, ample turnaround area, those types of things. So, those conditions still exist. Really, the goal is to make sure, though, that we have an accurate reflection of all roads existing and not.
I agree. Thank you.
I've heard it, I've heard that comment too about the bus drivers as far as turnaround areas. Some of that's a change, and so you may have a route type to run that bus, but you cannot hardly turn that bus around when you get up that road.
That's correct. We have, I know Mr. Sharp and Mr. Shepard prior to him, and I'm sure Mr. Trantham prior to him, we always go out and evaluate the road and see if it meets safe travel conditions. We've actually had to, following rain events where it's, it's gotten really bad and the roads deteriorated, discontinue use until the homeowner or DOT could repair the road. Either way, it has to be safe.
So, this will be for this year, and we won't have to do it for a while, I guess?
That's correct. So, our, our current TMS operator, once we get caught up to speed, will be submitting those as they become available. It's just that the work is so massive at this point in time with the addition of the 911 conversion. We need a good starting point, and then, you know, if you're reporting four or five roads a year, that's not a huge task, but the cumulative effect has been, become overwhelming.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you for that update. I think it's well worth it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Francis, I'll proceed with the agenda if that's okay. I have three items. The first one is the renegotiation of the funding formula. As you all know, we do that about every three years, and historically, we have come to you and said things like, "Well, you know, it costs more. Pay, pay rates have gone up from the state, and benefit costs have gone up, and gasoline costs more," and all that kind of stuff. And we'll be talking with the, the county administration, and they'll be talking to the Commissioners about increasing the funding formula for the next three years. And the county has been, you know, pretty consistent in providing us with funds, maybe not quite as much as what we've asked for, and we've had to continue spending some of our fund balance. And I don't want to be too dramatic, but things have significantly changed in the last two years. Okay? And so, I have had one meeting with Bryant Moorhead, County Manager, good fellow, I think pretty smart, and is very helpful for us, smart guy, and a couple telephone conversations. And then Taylor and I were on a conference call with him earlier today. I don't think Taylor got to say anything, but she listened, and while Bryant and I went back and forth. And we will schedule a meeting pretty soon, and Mr. Francis, it may be one of those where we have a minority of each board attend, along with Taylor and I, and maybe Bryant and someone else. But this is, I don't want to overstate this, but this is a very critical funding balance renegotiation. And I think the Commissioners are intending on supporting us, but I'm not sure people really understand the financial situation, so I wanted to paint that for you tonight. And then, as usually happens, you'll get questions, and you'll have some information, and then as we move through the process, we'll have more. I hope this is something we can wrap up in a couple months. We typically do, but it's something we need to get nailed down. So, you have a sheet in your packet. Did you get that, Ms. Medium? All right. You have a sheet in your packet, and I want to explain this to you, and then answer questions along the way or at the end or what. So, what we did to get a full grasp of the big picture, and that's why the funding formula, I think, is much better than what we did prior to the funding formula, where you were just thinking about one issue each year and having large meetings and fussing at each other, and we all want to avoid those and continue with the funding formula. But what we did on the far right, top corner, is we used the school year ending June 30th, 2019, as the base. And then the first highlighted area is the county general budget, and I'll go through that in just a second. And then the, moving down the page, the second highlighted area is the Haywood County Schools' local appropriation to the general budget. Neither one of these have capital in them, you know, those monies, those of you especially who've been on finance, those monies spend differently, and you get in a lot of trouble with auditors and other people if you, if you mix those the wrong way. And then, we did include with the counties what they had appropriated in fund balance. We did not include that in ours, but I think the comparison should be without fund balance appropriation because you don't want to do that. No one really wants to do that. You just have to do that sometimes. So, we'll do this sort of backwards. We'll go right to left instead of left to right. So, you can see, ending, the budget ending June 30th, 2019, that year, the county had a, a local general fund appropriation of $80 million, and then 1.7 of that was fund balance. If you go down to ours, sliding straight down that column, we had a local appropriation of $15,975. Our per pupil amount that we received was $2,107. And at that point in time, if you go to the bottom right corner, that allocation from the county was 19.35% of the county's general budget. Right? So, if you move over to, to the left, one column, the, the budget year ending June 30th, 2020, the, the county's budget went to just under $84 million with, excuse me, just under, it was, I'm sorry, $87 million. And then they also allocated $3,600 in fund balance, and the, the general allocation excluding the fund balance was $83.9. That was an increase, if you look at the bottom percentage there of, of their budget, excluding fund balance of 3.8%. If you look at, you keep going down, our appropriation was $16,441. That was an increase of 2.9%. Right? Go to 21, ending in 21, their allocation excluding fund balance actually went down 2.8%. And then you slide down to ours, and it was 1.43%. And then you go to the funding year ending, that just ended, in June 30th, 22, that year, the county's increased 3.5, and ours decreased just under 1%, 0.9%. And then, at the budgets that were just approved for the county and for us going through the end of the school year that is about to start, the county's increase, not excluding fund balance, excluding fund balance, is 8.54%. And our increase is 1.49%. Now, let me pause for a second. I think they needed to go up 8.54 plus appropriate some fund balance. They have had, and we have had, and lots of other organizations and businesses have had, a multitude of additional expenses, primarily around services. I talked to Bryant today about EMS services that they've had, they've had to add, and I, I'm glad they did. I might need them, you know? And they needed that. A lot of our services that we have added are around preventing learning loss, and we're going to come out of the school year that we just ended probably within about one point of our pre-COVID performance. Let's don't write that down until we get those numbers in September. But one point is not statistically significant. That's like saying our basketball team averages 68 points a year, 68 points a game, and last night, we scored 67. It's about the same. So, we have worked really, really hard, and when I say we, not me, a ton of us, to have our schools safe and not have a lot of COVID spread, and to teach, and to tutor, and to encourage people to be in, but we've had to spend a lot of money to do that, and we'll have to continue to do that for a while, even though our numbers are going down. So, I think that increase was very much needed by the county, and I don't ever want to speak for them, but as they move forward, they may have to do some more. It's been very strange times. If you look in the dark print right below that, over the period of the year ending in 19, which was the base, to projected through the school year that is about to start, or the fiscal year that's about to start, the county budget is up 13% excluding fund balance. When you put the fund balance in, it's like 16 and a half, but really, comparing apples to apples, it's up 13%. If you slide straight down from 13, ours is up 4.93%. And the biggest difference was the readjustment that they just did. You know, we might have gotten- You know, we might have gotten another quarter percent or half a percent along the way, and that would have helped us not spend a lot of fund balance. You know, fund balance is getting lower now. We'll have a better grip on that after the auditors leave, when we get probably into September. But not to overstate the matter, this is a critical unbalanced renegotiation year. And Taylor, I'll, you can come, she's coached me really well, so if I mess up, she can come over to the mic and, or you all can ask her questions. But we really need an adjustment similar to the county's adjustment and, and I think taking into consideration that over a four-year period, our overall increase is about two and a half times less than the county's increase. Part of that is a reduction in students to be fair. We do have fewer students, but that reduction in students should not account for, you know, an 8% difference in the increase that they have had and we have had. And again, they are good faith partners and, and, and I think want to help us, but we will have to work really hard to make sure we get a good adjustment. So I'll, I'll stop talking in just a second, and then you all can discuss this or ask questions or whatever. But if you slide down to the other highlighted item at the very bottom of the June 30th, 2023 column, at the end of the coming year, or going into the coming year, for the coming year, we now represent 17.3% of the county's general budget as opposed to 19.35. And again, part of that is a decrease in students, but that 2% is, really shouldn't be that much because we have fewer students. The other thing that I've been told many times throughout my career, when I was working on tough stuff and, and had conversations like this, you know, with Bill Upton and Dr. Garrett, you know, you have to win the, the mind when you're trying to convince somebody of something, and that's what you do with a piece of paper like this. But you have to win the heart, too. People have to feel like you're doing a good job and that you're being sincere and honest and that they're supporting you for a really good reason. And so, and again, I'm just playing my whole cards here. The commissioners can play this back later and hear all this if they want to. But in terms of, of winning the heart, I think of people who can help us have a good reset on the budget. We have been really good community partners, not just with the commissioners. I think sometimes we work with the commissioners and other agencies, you know, other entities to improve the community. But when COVID hit, and you all have heard this story before, but it's true, and I'll tell it to you again, we didn't hesitate. We were shut down on Saturday afternoon, and by the next Wednesday, we had laptops and iPads and work packets out, and we were driving buses and delivering food. And that not only helped our students not lose as much as other school systems, but it fed a lot of people in, in our community who had just lost their jobs. I think we've also been really good partners on the Francis Farm landfill situation. The county has done a lot of, I think, really good work up there to make sure that that place is stabilized, but we've had to move a lot of equipment and relocate things and adjust our supply chains, and we have done that without public complaint. And I'm not complaining now, I'm just letting, letting, reminding you all that we've been really good partners. And we've been really good partners on the central office that was owned by the county and sold, and I don't blame them for selling it and getting somebody in it, you know, who's gonna have more revenue for the county and hopefully more taxes for the county. But we did that. They gave us a building and some money, and we still had to borrow a couple million dollars and spend out of our local current expense to make that happen. So we've been really good partners, I think, for the community. And I share this information with you because I know you'll get questions, and this is, I think, just the big picture. I've talked to Bryant. I think he wants to help us, but at the same time, it's his job to make sure his balance bud, you know, his budget is balanced and the commissioners and all that stuff. So again, I don't want to be an alarmist because we've come to you through the years, Dr. Garrett or me, and I'm sure, you know, Mr. Upton helped get that thing started when he was superintendent of the funding formula, but this one is probably the most critical one. We are having conversations at this point about, do we do a one-year reset and then have a smaller percentage after that, which looks, that looks like what the county is doing. We think, I don't want to speak for Taylor, but we think, I've talked to her, that is smart, just to have a one-year reset and then the percentage increases or the amount per pupil after that are smaller to adjust with inflation or whatever after that point. There have been some discussions that I've had with Bryant about not getting there in one year, but getting there in two or three years, and we're afraid we'll run out of fund balance, you know? And we're very thankful that we had fund balance. Thank you, Ann Garrett, and this board and previous board members for spending wisely and cutting when you had to. The last thing I'll say, and then I'll pause, because I know you all may want to talk about this or ask questions, we also reduced our staff size this summer. You all know this, this is more for public consumption, even though I think we've talked about it some in previous work sessions. We reduced our staff size by 21 this summer, 21 positions. That was all done through retirements or resignations, and you all have seen those as we've had full session personnel and as you voted on personnel. So we're not just asking for more money because of COVID and, and dire times and, you know, and, and large inflation. We have worked also very hard to reduce our size of staffing to match our, our number of students. So with that, I'll pause, and you all can, you know, discuss or ask questions. It's not a pretty picture, but that, that's really the picture.
Any comments, questions for Dr. Nolte? I think that people need to understand as well that, you know, with the reduction of students, it's still the, the overhead costs are going to remain constant. 19 kids in a classroom versus 20 is not gonna, it's the same teacher, it's the same cost. And then the states raise the, the wages that, you know, if you're gonna do local, you've got to match up. And so, I mean, there's a huge expense there, but not that it's, like you said, it's not, that it's not deserved, it's just that it reflects on our budget, and we've had to reduce.
And I want you, I want everyone to know, people who are here tonight and people who may be listening or read about this later, Bryant Morehead, the county manager, gets that. He's the, he's a smart guy. He's done this, you know, and one of the things he said on the phone today was, I understand that if you're running your bus, and, and that is state money, but it's still a really good example, and, and you have, you know, a dozen kids get on or you have 30 kids get on, you still have to run the route. And it's the same thing with buildings. If you have a building and that building houses, you know, 400 students or 500 students, you still have to heat it and do maintenance and all those things, and a lot of that is local money. And then there are lots of other examples that we probably don't want to spend time on tonight that the county administration and commissioners know more about, but there are just lots of expenses that need to be covered. And again, I applaud the county for the adjustment they made to keep their folks employed in providing the services they, they provide, but we really need that too right now.
Any other comments?
All right. We'll keep working, and we'll let you know about our meeting. I'll talk to Mr. Francis about that, and we'll, we'll move as quickly as we can on it and try to get what we need to continue to be a, a top 10 performing school district with a good COVID record.
There you go.
Okay. So the next thing under my name is a COVID update. Dr. Putnam and I have had several conversations over the last two or three weeks about what we're reading in the new COVID regulations, and there just aren't any. The, you all and the rest of the community has heard about the state school kit, toolkit? I said school kit. Jill told the principals the other day when she was doing her report, it's gone. It has disappeared.
It is called the toolkit.
Yeah, not the school kit, the toolkit. When, when we read the regulations, there is no close contact tracing or quarantine for people who have been close contacts. There are no state requirements, to our knowledge, and I'm sure there aren't any. There are a few recommendations. So we said some things to the principals during the principals' meetings, and, you know, we're, had just, you know, we planned to start next year the way we ended the last year, minus the quarantines, because they're not required anymore. And certainly if people want to wear a mask because they've been sick on an optional basis, they can, but there's no requirement really for anything. Last Friday evening, I was, or late afternoon, I was at home, and I got a call from Dr. Jaben, and he was just checking in because he had been reading the same thing. And we had a long discussion, and, you know, as, as the medical director, he's concerned about case counts and things like that, but I think we all realize that we're as close to normal as we can be in terms of regulations, and otherwise, we're just gonna need to start school and monitor things. But we don't, unless we have some directive we're not aware of, we have talked and we don't plan to implement any, and think that we have done a really good job getting through the heart of COVID, and we will just hope that the illness and severity of illness will continue to be not, not as significant.
That mean we don't have to vote anymore, huh?
Do not have to vote. We did not vote in July because that went away, too.
So you're saying basically if somebody tests positive today for COVID and there's no requirement, if they're feeling okay tomorrow, they could go to school?
No, if they're sick, they need to go home and follow the doctor's orders, just like they would if they were diagnosed with the flu or a stomach virus or whatever, and the doctor says you need to go home.
Waiting period or anything like?
They need to, they need to go home for five days. But there's no requirement for, there's no requirement for contact tracing or telling other people to go home.
Just one reminder, and then we reminded principals of this, we still have a fever-free policy. Got to be fever-free for 24 hours unmedicated prior to return to school. So that, you know, as far as a COVID-specific protocol, we do not. It's just our general, you know, whether it's the flu or COVID or whatever it is, you got to be fever-free for 24 hours without fever-reducing meds.
We've had that in the past.
Yes, sir.
When you've had outbreak of the flu at, say, Tuscola and lost a lot of kids staying at home or stomach virus or whatever, and just common sense.
And then as Dr. Nolte said, you know, what, what a doctor prescribes, we, we have to follow that, so.
There you go. That's good news.
We, I, I'm trying to get this button to turn red. We think it's good news. We have done really well, opening up as soon as we could and providing extracurricular opportunities for students and having visitors to campus, and we did all of that without a lot of school-related spread. So we think those, the lack of regulations is a move in the right direction. One more thing, and then if we could have a, a brief closed session to review personnel for Monday, save us a little time on Monday. So I have a doctoral research that I have approved, but I want to spend a little bit more time on this one for a couple of reasons. One reason is that there is a local connection, and another reason is that it is some research that would ask students to provide some information, and we usually don't do those. It is usually, teachers, if you want to participate, here's a link, click on it, participate. If you don't want to, that's fine. I think the last one was a principal study. This is a study, a doctoral study from one of our high school counselors. It's a counselor at Tuscola High School who's working on a doctoral degree from Liberty University, you know, reputable university. And it's a study that is looking, looking at the impact of adverse events for students during COVID. You know, and the only time you can really study that super effectively in real time is during COVID. You know, you can do a look, a look back, but if you're getting what happened to people and what they recollect about it, you do forget things over time. So without giving you too much historical information, there have been studies probably over the last 40 or 50 years about adverse impacts that people have when they're young and how that is very detrimental to them if they don't have good support. Parents passing away, moving a lot, significant illness, abuse, neglect, and those kinds of things. Those studies have been called the ACEs studies, and they've actually adverse conditions. And there are even studies now that show that you can overcome some of those situations if you have, you know, positive adult in your life, if you have stability, if you don't have too many adverse events. So the intent of the study is to invite students to answer 30 questions. The first 10 are about whether or not they've had an adverse event during COVID, really in the last few, last couple of years. It's anonymous. They just fill out their age and their sex and, and that kind of stuff. And then, you know, are people yelling at you? Have you been abused? Those kinds of things. There are 10 of those questions, and it's all anonymous and it's done through a link. Typically, in a situation like this, you would get parent permission, but we literally, and I think for good reason, don't have every parent's email address to send it to the parents. And so the plan is, as approved by Liberty, and I think it's reasonable, is to make multiple notifications at the beginning of the school year to high school students, starting at Tuscola, and if they get enough at Tuscola, they would stop there, that we're doing this study. If you have any questions, if you don't want to, your child to participate, here's a form where you can opt out, and make that known multiple ways, three or four or five times, a bunch of times. And then allow students who aren't opted out to answer the 30 questions. I wanted to spend the time on it because I know that... I wanted to spend the time on it because I know that even if you do a perfect job of advertising that, there will be someone who will say, I did not see it and I don't want my child to do it and they did it and I didn't know about it. But we are very hopeful that the counselor in talking to the students will say, now don't you do this, don't you fill this out unless you've told your parents about it, refer them to our website, refer them to the flyer that I've given you, take the parent opt-out form home to them. So I think it's good research. I feel comfortable with it for several reasons. Number one is it's anonymous. No one is assigned a number. People just log in and complete the information and no student names are connected to it and, and the counselor will, I'm confident, do a really good job of letting the school community know publicly and on campus that this is completely optional and if you don't want to participate for any reason, don't participate. So any questions about that?
Any questions? I appreciate you letting us know ahead of time, so if we do get questions or phone calls, we can say, hey, look, you know.
Well, you, yeah, you can tell them that it's my responsibility to approve those and I'm going to tell them it's the researcher's responsibility to explain it to them. And I, well, I feel comfortable doing that. I did my own research, you know, 23 or four years ago. But anyway, wanted to let you know about that and I think it will go well. I don't think it will go perfectly.
Very good. All right. So we got some personnel issues we need to talk about.
Well, as you know, what we've typically done, board, is on the work session night before the Monday night, we try to point out some personnel things that might save us some time in our discussion on Monday.
Okay.
I don't have many, maybe three or four little things just to say to you. It shouldn't take long.
Legal files.
Oh, that's right. Mr. Smathers, I think I told you that, Mr. Francis, Mr. Smathers did have a couple legal items.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. So I need a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Who made the motion? David made the motion, say it on Mr. Henson. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those who say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll retire to closed session.
Probably will not need to come back.
Oh, no, we won't take any action tonight. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Yep.